It is 7:00 PM on May 16th. Welcome to the Wayne Township Board of Trustees meeting. And if you haven't signed in, please sign into our guest sheet at the back. We have a roll call, please, Darrell.
Roll call. Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Patrick?
Here.
All residents of County Hall.
Thank you. I'm going to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I have a motion to approve the May 2nd meeting.
Salute.
I will second.
Okay, all the flavors of the party, yeah?
Aye.
Um, additions or changes? It looks like we have an additional, um, resolution that we're adding, which is 2023-39. Have we reached that?
Yes.
All right. So, we have any citizens' comments tonight? Mr. Coleman?
Voice is terrible, so, come on, Jess. Um, Chris Coleman, 10:33, just from way away from Ohio. I'm here responding for counsel, because the question was asked on our timeline on the, uh, the OPWC joint multi-jurisdictional project. And I know Chief Jacob will talk to you today about it. We'll know. Um, our engineer, Joyce Williams, would like to have any kind of, uh, participa- participation for you by July 1st.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at. So, may I answer that question?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very tangible. All right, um, Mr. Camery from our road department is unavailable tonight, so... Let's see what he submitted. Done mowing. We got chip seal bids, and there was an error in the total square yards. I'm working with the engineer's office to get that rectified. Um, we had a large rain event last week, as we all know. So, I mean, there's a lot of cleanup work. Wedging is on the list, and all road department equipment is available. So, thanks, Scott. Sorry, you can't be here. Okay. Next up is Chief Shear for the fire department report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Squad was picked up. All they wanted was a box, and they had scrapped in the chassis. When we got back, it ripped off, so...
Did they leave it?
Huh?
They left it?
No.
Oh, okay.
They drove it out of there.
Okay.
And tried to give them the service records, and they didn't want nothing, because he said, "All they're doing is pulling the box off, and how the chassis is scrapped over."
Oh, okay.
The battalion vehicle, we did get new tires and alignment, which was, the alignment was about 99% good, which is a good thing for that vehicle, since it was wrecked. And, uh, they stopped the protocol last time. We got one more person. Now they think they're doing it tomorrow. Seagrave has done new bids. That's all we got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Has there been any update on, I know last time we talked about a, um, air week you had?
Just waiting to get it scheduled in and drop it off to them.
Okay. Because I'm kind of thinking we might want to tie that into the $10,000 if we approve the resolution, so we can use that money for that.
Right.
Okay.
Because I'm just waiting to tell Joe down there when we're dropping off.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, zoning department report, Miss Stacy Loving, no report. So, there is none. Is that correct?
Um, now, just basically about, um, the public hearing tonight, just the change, um, is in the parking lot and the, um, addition of a canopy to Bentley's Possum Resort, which triggered, um, a site plan review.
Yeah, so at 7:30, we'll be breaking for a public hearing for that, so... All right, administrators' report.
Uh, again, the board, uh, to tidy up on my report, uh, chip seal bids, ally construction was a low bid at $2.11 a square yard. Again, like in Scott's report, you're trying to jazz this into about 20,000 extra square yards on our list of roads. Uh, that was due to one of their, uh, engineers making a, an error in where you put the decimal point, I think. So, also had to do, and they did get it clarified with the contractor, their, their will would take that 20,000 square yards off and still hold the same price. So, we're going to be good on that. We'll talk about the fire engineer in a minute. I guess I'd like to request a, uh, fire department staffing and funding issue, uh, work session sometime in the future. If you're working around your vacation, whatever you're, coming up first or second meeting in June or whatever.
Somebody have to be the second?
Second.
Second, okay. While we're on meetings, I have a scheduled visitor for this next meeting on June 2nd, and that's from Swallow Water Believe. Keep thinking of me now. The person's going to be here in a baby molly colony. Uh, it's basically to invite the board, uh, for float and to lie. First, we could lie down along my river. This is their annual thing that they do. So, other than that, I don't think they have anything else to speak about.
It's June 6th?
June 2nd meeting is when they were going to...
The June 6th meeting? Okay, okay. I heard you say 2nd. I'm like, I thought that that was not a Tuesday. Okay. Great.
It's June 6th.
Okay. All right.
Aggregation, um, village letters have already been out. Ours get distributed on May 18th for AES and May 19th for Duke Energy. And I've got copies of those in your packet. They're basically, very similar, because the names have changed. All the, you know, villages have sent out a few calls on some of those that were sent out. Also getting some calls on people that did not receive letters, and they were asking about it, as if they asked. If they're not on the distributor's list as a supplier, then they don't get the letter. So, if some of them are already with another supplier, like I had one public resident, I think, was with. I don't know, it was another supplier. It was, uh, had a pretty decent rate. Actually, it was six, it's better than the rate we're getting, and it's good to be December, I think. So, some of them have, they've chosen their own suppliers involved with lower rates. So, if they have any questions, they can either, if they call you, they can just send them to that, uh, Trubell hotline, or they can call me at the office, and I can give directions.
So, people that are on another supplier plan right now, they would automatically opt in when their contract ends?
Correct.
They would go back to the AES or Duke rate?
Right.
Okay.
So...
So, like, that customer is meeting December?
Yeah.
So, we'll have to watch that?
Yeah. And so, I told them, and they said, "Don't worry, I've got it worked on my count."
That's good.
Good.
I told them, said, "Oh, I'd probably up around 10 cents or better."
That's not bad.
Other than that, I think that's really all I have. We get to legislation.
All right, um, website, uh, and that's the end of our reports. So, now we're on old business, website update.
Not quite yet.
Okay, great. New business, questions or concerns of our bills this time?
None.
Right? Okay. All right, moving on to legislation. Resolution 2023-32, approving a quote from Payment Technology, Inc. for the use of Reclamite asphalt sealing on Cook Jones Road with Wayne Township. And that is for $20,187.10 for 1.56 miles.
And that is an estimated amount based on just estimate quantities will actually be billed for quantities used.
Okay. Good to know. Any questions about that resolution or discussion?
I have none. I have none as well.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-32.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Coleman, second by Mr. Jacobs, to adopt Resolution 2023-32. Call roll thereon. Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah.
This resolution is hereby adopted this date, 16th day of May, 2023.
All right, then, kind of relating to it, we have Resolution 2023-33, which is to use ARPA funds up to $25,000 to pay for that, um, Cook Jones Road Reclam- Reclamate? Am I saying that right?
Reclamite.
Reclamite?
Yeah.
Not Reclamate. Reclamite, okay. Got it.
You seconded that last resolution?
I did, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any discussion on using the ARPA funds for this?
No, neither.
All right, I'll again make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-33.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Coleman, second by Mr. Patrick, to adopt Resolution 2023-33. Call roll thereon. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this 16th day of May, 2023.
Okay. Resolution 2023-36, which is Wayne Township, 2023 chip sealing projects, authorizing expenditures from the ARPA?
34 first.
Oh, shoot. I was...
Skip one.
Yeah, I skipped one. Because I thought I was skipping... I thought I was the...
I'm sorry.
Site plan. Where is 34 on here? Hold on, let me have a look.
I don't think it's on over there.
It's on the agenda, but I don't have it.
Okay.
You did skip it.
Do you have a resolution there for 34?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'll read the, um, brief description of it then. Requesting that the, 2023-34 requesting that the county auditor certify to Wayne Township the total current tax evalu- evaluation of Wayne Township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by each one mill of new tax levy. And this is to analyze what, if we potentially want to do something with a fire department levy.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-34?
I will second. And to be clear, this is, uh, this is not taking an action, putting it on the ballot.
This is exploratory.
That's correct.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs, to adopt Resolution 2023-34. Call roll thereon, Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this 16th day of May, 2023.
Okay. Now, we're skipping 35 for now until we get through our public hearing. Now, we're on Resolution 2023-36, which is our chip sealing projects. And this is authorizing ARPA funds up to... Let me scroll down here. $25,000. And this is for Spartan Hill, Henderson, Hacker Farm, Guard, Sandy Run, Michaelia?
Michaela?
Michaela. Adam, Brandon, and Cold Springs Roads. Do you have any issue with using ARPA funds for that?
I do not.
Some of those roads just seem like first names. Can you double check that?
No. Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt Resolution 2023-36.
I will second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Coleman, second by Mr. Jacobs, to adopt Resolution 2023-36. Call roll thereon. Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this 16th day of May, 2023.
All right. This is the exciting one. Resolution 2023-37, resolution to approve an amendment to Resolution 2021-08 for the purchase of a fire engine through Seagrave Fire Appress. So, for everybody's background, back in 2021, there was a contract with Seagrave to purchase a pumper. It has not been delivered yet. Uh, it's way past due date, and we were notified in January that they wanted a nearly $90,000 surcharge, $89,964 over our contract price to cover a list of itemized procurement items that the pricing had gone up on. And we have, we've asked for documentation on that, and we have an attachment here of the price increase on all of those items. We've worked with our Warren County Prosecutor's Office to determine what our next steps could be, and we could litigate it with them, but we'd have to go to Wisconsin to do that, and it probably cost us more than it's actually worth, is what we, I think, determined as a board. We also have the option of canceling that contract and rebidding it. And to get the exact same unit, it would cost us $789,556 with another hundred, um, another, with a current delivery timeline of 820 days from now.
Of your place to order, yes?
That would've been for a new one. Not a new one now. Not this one.
Right, but for, from today's date. If you were to cancel and redo, okay, so, oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So, we have, you know, debated this back and forth as to what to do. And we kind of feel like we're over a barrel in that there's really not, no other better choice. So, we made a resolution here for us to vote on tonight to see if we want to go ahead and give them the additional $89,000. And we'd also get a two-year's additional, um, warranty on it and $10,000 parts and labor service voucher for any Seagrave's equipment. And that's what I was talking to Chief Shear about, is we have, we actually have something we can use that on right now. Use part of that 10 grand on that, so, um... Do you guys have any more comments or questions, or...?
I think you said it pretty well, all the details too, as well. I think Gus spent a lot of time trying to negotiate and try to get down to price as best he could, from our angle as well.
Right.
And we tried to exhaust every option that you physically can.
Right. And did they, I, I didn't see in the, um, contract, there was no timeline now on it.
That's correct.
Okay. Did he give any indication of the breaching?
Actually, I mean, I gave him a verbal, but this was being presented tonight with the... I've sent him a notice of proceed or whatever, so it's supposed to be put in line ASAP.
Okay. And it did say in the amended contract that there would be no other surcharges added on to this. I saw that. Okay. That was good.
And then there are more questions we're going to talk about, that this has been laid, how it affects our future budgets in the legislature board as well. Okay. That's good.
So, this, uh, it should be hopefully 90 days or less, because like I say, all of our, all of our components are now in.
Okay.
He doesn't think there'll be any hiccups or whatever. But there's been hiccups for two and a half years right now, so...
All right, appreciate all your work on it. It's...
I'm, yeah, sorry I couldn't do any better, but, um...
It is what it is, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we tried.
I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed in not being able to get anything better, but... At least we didn't lose our place in line and...
Right. Do we monitor?
Yeah.
Correct.
I still think we should do a press release. I mean, I know I would sure appreciate, if I were vetting companies to build a fire apparatus for me, and I were doing my due diligence, I think I'd appreciate having this information on Seagrave.
I think if we want to do that, though, it would be beyond, after we get it delivered.
Sure.
Well, it's also, yes. Good point. We don't want to have 810 days, right?
Exactly.
We get customers, you know, your customer, like, asks, they'll call, they'll, they'll talk, and, you know, it's what we think, I mean. So, yeah.
The one point to duly note, I guess, is a surcharge is the last thing we have to pay.
Right, I saw it, yeah.
So, if at point in time when he comes to have to issue that check, if you want to make a, a point about it, then that, yeah, that might be the appropriate time to...
With a copy of the check in the, is, is the, uh... The print of the check is the...
Make sure that we've got a, uh, all the components on the vehicle before we make it.
Right. All right, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-37.
And I will second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Coleman, second by Mr. Jacobs, to adopt Resolution 2023-37. Call roll thereon, Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this 16th day of May, 2023.
Okay. Now, to pay for that, we have Resolution 2023-38, which is, once again, our lovely ARPA funds, which I am so thankful we have, because we'd be in a world of hurt, I think, if we didn't have this. But this is, um, a resolution to use up to $75,000 in our ARPA funds to pay for that surcharge. And we're also going to use the ambulance, uh, the sale of our ambulance that we had as additional money for that, which was $16,200, if I remember right. Okay. Any questions? No. Who wants to motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution 2023-38.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Jacobs, second by Ms. Coleman, to adopt Resolution 2023-38. Call roll thereon, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
And Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this is, this is 16th day of May, 2023.
Okay. Um, Gus, do you have Resolution 2023-39? Hold up.
Nope, two more. It was added.
35?
Yeah.
Bonn.
Bonn, yeah.
One more down.
There you go. Okay. Now, we have Resolution 2023-39, not on your agenda, but we have it. Authorizing the submission of a Franklin Street Phase 2 water main and street improvements application, which is what Chris Coleman came to us last meeting about. It's a multi-jurisdictional participation with the Village of Waynesville and the Wayne Township Board of Trustees, which helps them in their public work submission, because it's a, helps improve the point score, basically. So, this is, um... Do we have, oh, 20, we do have $25,000 in here that we would be our participation, just like we did with our last, our last projects with the Village of Waynesville. I think it's good to work hand in hand with our, with our villages on this, so... I think that was something that we definitely need to do together. Any questions about the resolution?
My only comment is the same as every time. Hold them responsible for the scope of work.
Okay.
In the one project, they still have not completed the scope of work that they, they agreed to.
And, and that's, you know, that's where I would say is, you know, it has to go both ways. You know, I'm, I'm happy to participate in these types of things. We have, you know, joint residents. We serve the same people in many cases, and, uh, we, we don't want the village to forget that either. And I, I appreciate the effort of local residents in Wayne. And not that this is a tit for cat thing, but we, we appreciate that, hey, we don't feel like we're the ones who are always putting out and putting out and putting out, you know? We've never come to you asking for you to participate in our OPWC things, of course. However, you know, I think what Chief's referencing is, you know, the, the checking and maintenance of the fire hydrants. And, um, you know, it's, it's always a, well, that's not our responsibility, or we haven't done that, or, you know, we'll get around to it. You know, we have other things going on. And, and I think we just want to make sure that, you know, the commitments from that end are honored. And, you know, if it's a staffing problem, that's one thing, but, you know, we... If we got, if we need to pay to have those hydrants taken care of and have those hydrants flushed, and make sure it's up properly as well, because I understand there might be some question on that end too. Again, I, I'm happy to work together. I'm glad we're working together. I want to, um, but... Let's...
It's both ways.
Let's both ways. I agree.
I guess we should go to their meeting and, um, bring that up?
Yeah.
You know, I've, I'm working on Corwin Avenue OPWC project, and it's, you know, I'm trying to get it in for this year, just like, so it'd be competing with this one. And, uh, village manager, he's making it aware of it. So, we will be going to the Village of Waynesville and asking, you know, again, to skip the points for joint offer agreement, because they do have part of the avenue, you know, in the village. You know, and our timeline on that, and I explained to him, is that we want to pave Corwin Avenue after the bridge is done on 73, uh, because it's probably going to be quite a bit...
Probably used, yeah.
Potentially, the trucks are using it, some, you know, some damage, and so we're being prepared, you know, to have it go. So, um, just hope to say, you know, hope to pay, reciprocate when we ask for, um, participation on that.
All right, that's good to know. The future plan. All right, with those things being said, um, do I have a motion on Resolution 2023-39?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-39?
I will second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs, to adopt Resolution 2023-39. Call roll thereon, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this 16th day of May, 2023.
Okay, we have...
It's almost perfect timing.
And we have three minutes, so let's see if we can... Gus, Darrell's writing. Do you have any correspondence to discuss?
Uh, yes, you do. I have a letter from Warren County Police Office, uh, that, excuse me, from Warren County officials. Basically, it's an update on, uh, it's a legal notice. Considered to propose a notice of the Warren County subdivision regulations at May 16th. And then also, uh, And then also, uh, I believe I reckon it, uh, also a hearing on. The joint with that, uh, thoroughfare plan. And the other is a packet from the Warren County Office of Grants and Administration, and it's for, uh, basically, it's an opt-out, or if we do not want, if we want to participate with the county in our community development block program, it's, it's a notice that comes out every three years, and we have to let them know, if we don't, if we want to be able to participate, then we don't have to do anything.
Is the community what program?
Community Development Block Program.
Oh, development.
And the only reason why you would maybe not want to participate in the community development block program is twofold. One, if you're an entity of a substantial size and want to go alone and not be in with the county as far as participation. Sometimes the City of Lebanon or City of Springville will go and get their, you know, their own money and not go with the county, and they'll be subject to permission to make a decision on what projects get funded. And the only other reason that you would not participate is if you wanted nothing to do with HUD. Anytime you get any money from HUD, then they got the potential, was your five-year master plan of making you do certain things or, you know, be compliant with some of their rules and regulations.
Okay. Gerald, do you have any correspondence?
I got one piece, it's from Warren County Health District, it's for a monthly newsletter.
Okay. Okay. That's a good stopping point for us now, so, um, it is seven-thirty, so we're gonna open the meeting for the, um, public hearing for, um. Okay, let me read this appropriately. Wayne Township Board of Trustees shall now come to order at seven-thirty PM for a public hearing that was scheduled at seven-thirty PM on five-sixteen for a site plan application. This is for Bentley's Possum Resort. It's a, um, kind of an amendment that was, that was done to the original site plan, so it was a major change. We had to have them come back in, so Stacy Loving is gonna walk us through the changes here.
All right, so basically, um, this method definition of something that I cannot approve myself, um, it's, it didn't have a net change in any way in parking spaces, but it's really just, um, a new layout for the parking lot, um, which brought it closer to the right-of-way line, um, which is still in conformance of the zoning. It's just a different layout, a different circulation pattern, and the addition of a canopy out the front of the building. Um, I'll, I'll be showing you some elevations, I think is actually an improvement in terms of how the building looks and everything, but, um, under the zoning, it had to come back to you as the approval and authority. Once again, this is at forty-four eighty-eight East State Route seventy-three, and the site plan area is five point nine one acres. It's zone B one. The new project is still within our floor area ratio and impervious surface standards. Where do you say the next part? And to recap, it's about twenty to eight thousand square foot building for kennels and play areas and common surroundings and so forth. I have one here, I did speak to, um, point at some of this earlier before the meeting, and I want to go over, um, some of them today. Basically, the parking and landscaping, meet the zone, town standards, um, I did review the lighting plan. I'm gonna pull this up here. We'll get back to that. So, to just go out a bit, here's the entire site, and you can see that the, um, the parking lot now comes, oh, it's not working. My computer does this, when I'm switching. And so this is showing me the new site plan. The difference here is that the parking lot is, is out here towards the front, uh, towards the road, instead of kind of along this section here. This canopy is right in this area. This plan, um, not that this is something you're signing on, but you see, there's a lot more detail now, that we've gotten a lot of information in since the last meeting, their driveway permit, um, there's stormwater plans finalized on here, and they have their permits, they're able to, you know, start grading. We've seen this start degrading work, because. Um, that's all replaced. And so you see the leach fields and the retention farms and so forth here. Um, these are the elevations that they changed in front of the building. And. Looking for this. Here's the landscaping. That's all easier to see the parking lot there, and the landscaping around the parking lots. All of this is in, in conformance, um, with the zoning. As far as, um, the eastern boundary of the landscaping, and the last time you guys, um, made a condition to increase the amount of trees on that boundary to, um, one per thirty, instead of one per forty feet, and then fifty percent deciduous and fifty percent evergreen, um, they did do that. But I think, um, when you were talking, that perhaps you wanted to close this gap. But I did speak to, um, to them about this opening, and they feel like the reason they left that there is because of all of this tree line here, which is now an adjacent property, still owned by the same person. So this is up to, to you guys, if you, once again, if you want to spread it out, or I had prepared a condition, um, for your, for you to think about in your, in the resolution.
But that vegetation is on the other property.
It is, but I, what I did is put what I call an if and then, if and when scenario on there, is like if or when the adjacent property is either sold or developed by the same property, or that then the trees would have to be installed. So that's up to you, if you are, you know, you're paying with that condition, or if you wanted to, say, stretch the trees out and fill the gap. But there are more trees than there were last time, and so I want to tell you, tell you that, that they did increase that number like you asked, but they kept it in the same space as the last time. So that, that's one of the issues. Minor issue, and then the other is. So this lighting plan meets, and this is what I focused on when I reviewed it, is that the borders that it meets, the, um, not exceeding point-two-foot handles. But today, late today, as I started looking at it, I realized that this is not placed on the site plan the same as the, um, on the lighting plan, and it's different. You can see on the site plan that the parking lot's only, it's only like twenty-three feet from the right-of-way line. If you go to the lighting plan, you can see that, uh, that's larger. It's just a matter of how that was laid out, and I've spoken to the applicant, and he said, if you would be willing to put a condition on to just return a plan to me for approval, they just have to recalculate and possibly move a light if necessary. So. We'll get back to, any questions on that, and we'll go back to the PowerPoint for a minute.
No.
So these were the, the conditions that I, one was that the conditions of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one remain in effect. And then the second one is, like I just said, if the adjacent property is sold to a new owner or developed by the current owner, that's where they would fill in on the, um, space that's vacant. And then you would need, um, a third, uh, third condition to address the lighting plan being resubmitted.
Okay.
But other than that, it's pretty much everything is the same.
Okay. All right, so in order for this to be a public hearing, we have, um, everyone has the right to speak in either support or opposition of this plan, or ask questions. And before speaking, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll allow five minutes per person. So, do we want to hear from the applicant first?
So Jim Davidson with Construction Managers of Ohio, I'm, we're the builder for Bentley's. So they wanted to have more of a hotel feel in the front, so that when people are dropping dogs off, that they're not getting rained on and such, so that necessitated moving the parking down, so there's more of a kind of loop around. And then we also added stone to sort of, um, dress up the front of it, so it doesn't look like just a metal building.
Okay.
So, those are.
It looks nicer.
I do like, I feel like the elevation.
Yeah, I think it looks, it looks way better.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that, those are the major changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. All right, do we have any, um, proponents of this that want to talk? Here are none, do we have any opponents that want to come to public hearing? Okay. You guys have any questions for, anybody here? Mr. Davidson, okay. All right, then I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, discussion. Um, I agree with the lighting plan change, needs to be resubmitted, make sure that's right.
Correct.
I, I don't know, number two, was it, I don't know if it might, I mean, with that, it.
The trees?
Yeah, the tree line there, I mean. I, I, I don't have strong feelings when we're at it, so.
I like the if-then statement, too, because you can see it's out there just a little bit further away. It does give you dense vegetation right there, but somebody could come in and just clear it all out of the way. If that happens, we need to have at least a, a go-back-to, which I like that.
My concern is that the go-back-to is, I mean, we're kind of, it's beyond our control at that point. I mean, not like we can make them tear the building down because they didn't put trees up or anything, so. That's my only concern.
It's a right of violation for not putting the trees in.
Yeah? Okay.
It would be a building tear-down, but would.
Yeah.
Okay, so you could, I didn't know if we had any kind of a, like, legal defense, I guess I want to say, if, if that isn't followed through with.
Paul, Paul has a police sign he swaps on the fire truck.
That's what I do.
Just, just a quick swap.
Okay, if we have, if we have that, then I'm okay with the, if it's sold and.
Does it, let me just make sure, does it cover, uh, they just can't, here, hold on, let me just read it again.
Okay.
That makes sense.
It was, if when the adjacent lot with the parcel ID is sold to a new owner or developed by the current owner, one tree for each thirty millennial feet will be planted along with eastern, along the eastern boundary, where there is currently no buffer shown. Fifty percent of the trees planted to meet this requirement must be evergreen. So even if it's sold to a new owner, and the owner leaves those trees there, we still have to have.
I think it needs another sentence.
What do you think it needs? Even if it's sold to.
Because it just, it, and I'm thinking about this now, it says if it's sold to a new owner or developed by the current owner, it doesn't take, it doesn't cover that. The current owner may not develop it, but just tear the trees out.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Do you understand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I was just thinking that as well, you, you missed one. I missed one potential.
Well, how many, what's, what's the length of it, what's the, what's the distance, and how many trees are we talking about? We talking about three trees, four trees, one?
Here's the thing, is that they have the rate number of trees for the entire distance, I believe, like, they just.
Right, but what's the, that open area, how many feet?
How long is it? It's about a hundred and ten feet.
So we're talking three or four trees?
Three trees. Can you do that in Spain?
Yeah. Okay. So it's up to them if they want to put the three trees in now or not, so. Right?
Well, um, the thing is. Five hundred and eleven feet right now. That's almost five hundred and eleven. See, they have this, they have the seventeen, so if they, they get to stretch out the trees they have into that space. They took the lis, the distance that's required and put the per thirty every three feet in that space, so.
Just like they did.
They wouldn't have to plant, technically, they don't need to plant more trees, they can just stretch these out.
Yeah.
Or we could even have, you know.
I know, it's like, when they first came, they, it was the same deal, where they had the trees more clustered together, instead of, yeah.
So since they're proposing to put all those trees like this, my condition was just, well, keep adding more of that same ratio. One per, they have to do at least one tree per every thirty feet, so let's.
I mean, I think we should leave your condition two in there like it is, but add that additional, um, sentence, like you said, about, or if the current owner tears that down, then they have to put the additional trees in. Okay, you're gonna. Is this the buffer, buffer tree line? Yeah. Okay. Okay, and then condition three was just the re, re, the middle of the, uh, lighting plan, right, with your approval. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five with those three conditions.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Colvin, second, and Mr. Jacobs, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, as if it's press on big movement, call roll there on Ms. Colvin.
Yes.
Mr. Patrick.
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
This resolution should be adopted this sixteenth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
All right, that ends that portion of it, thank you for coming, we appreciate it a lot. There's some dirt moving, so we know it's getting started.
Everybody, they change.
Yeah. Okay, so back to our meeting here, um, elected officials' comments. I'd like to say that I'm sorry to hear about Gary Campbell, the owner of, um, I mean, Bentley Power Equipment, passing away last week. That was quite a, it's gonna be a blow to the community, I know that, he's, he's put a really good business in there, and it's heartbreaking to see that happen. So it's good to see the business is gonna continue on in the family, so. Comments you guys want to say?
The only thing I had is, uh, you know, school's ending, so graduation season is upon us, uh, with ceremonies and stuff like that. And I was gonna say, to people, uh, guys, hopefully sometime probably before the next school year comes in, we have, um, you know, a super tent maybe come in, it was, uh, pretty free camp at some point. Would be, would be great to start a school season, maybe, try to get a traditional thing moving forward, at least. Would be nice.
Actually, uh, you guys haven't seen the real nice PowerPoint presentation that's been put together? Tell it all about the development and status of the schools and.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That'd be good.
So it's, could be worth him coming in and reviewing it.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, aren't they having a senior parade on Friday, I heard?
I'm not sure when the senior parade, uh, is at this right?
I thought I heard that.
I'm not sure.
Don't, don't quote me on that. Okay.
Well, June third's the Golden Chapter Show, too.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
I will not be here for it.
I won't be here either.
Yeah.
All right, uh, we have no work session tonight, no executive session. I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-nine PM.
Second.
Hi.
Thank you. At least maybe at the beginning of the school year.